We have a very special young man that's came today. We got a special young man who's came today to give this. He's somehow known literally since he was born. And he don't believe it or not, but he wrote to a lot of people when I asked him to come. His name's Hunter Mitchell. Hunter is eight years old and he has, he's battled neuroblastoma for many years. And he's in stage four right now and he's had two surgeries. And I always call him Big Game Hunter because he's always ready to come. He's been assistant coach with the girls softball team for Coach Thacker. He was responsible for the state tournament run. It was Hunter's play calling that got us there that year. And he's responsible for all Coach Thacker's wins, but Coach Thacker's responsible for Coach Thacker's losses. Is that right Hunter? That's right. So I asked Hunter to stand up and come today and lead us in our place of allegiance. Hunter? Whenever you want to start, go ahead.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Hunter.
Thanks Hunter.
Appreciate it buddy. Coach, Big Game Hunter. Okay, Mr. Jones, if you please read the role.
Atkins.
Chair.
Bishop.
Chair.
Karu.
Yes ma'am.
Franzini.
Russell.
Dusley.
Here.
Teager.
All right, we have item four, which is the minutes from the meeting on May 11th. Do we have a motion to accept those?
It's on move.
Copy.
Any discussion? Any changes or? We good? All right, hearing none. Please call role.
Atkins.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Karu.
Yes.
Franzini.
Yes.
Dusley.
Yes.
Teager.
Yes.
Alrighty. Our next item is public comments. The first one will be bike lanes on Main Street and April Haiden, Ms. April Haiden and Jonathan Coleman. Don't fight over it, y'all take turns.
Well, this is kind of a continuation, I would say, of the students from the fall class that were looking at trying to make Morehead a more bicycle-friendly community. Their community partner was working with Morehead Tourism, meaning Joy. And this is one of the projects that's come out of this. And they have the grant money that pays for all of the money cost. And several volunteers have already come out to help with this. So we're not asking for money and Greg's not here.
Greg's not feeling well, he's not here tonight.
Okay, but we have spoke with Greg. And just so you know, what Jonathan's going to talk about is a reflection of our conversation with Greg Jones and what he thought would be good and acceptable and maintainable from the city's perspective too.
So after speaking with Greg, our initial plan was to install bike lanes throughout Main Street. But due to spacing issues, we concluded that it would be more feasible to put shareos, which we have some examples.
Put what?
Shareos. Shareos. I have some examples that I can pass around if y'all would like to see.
There's one copy for each of them. You gotta take one and pass around, so.
What shareos basically are, they are bicycles painted on the road with like two arrows above it, which will indicate that road is being used by cyclists. So that both motorists will know that it's being used and it will give the cyclist an idea of where to ride. In addition to that, we're also looking into putting bike boxes at the intersections.
I'm sorry, one more time, bike boxes.
Bike boxes.
Bike boxes, right.
We're waiting on approval from that, but.
Are you waiting for approval from that?
Doing this federal highway, we submitted a letter of request for them to do it and a letter of support from tourism.
And basically what those will be, they are green boxes that will be placed at intersections on Main Street. And it'll put the bicycles in front of line. It will essentially move the stopping marker back and create the space where the cyclist can go, where they'll be more visible when they go across the intersections. That way hopefully it will make crossing highways safer and overall make it more and more bike-friendly community. Are there any questions?
And doing this, this kind of stenciling of the bikes is cheaper and easier to maintain than the bike stripes? Am I right?
Yes. With the bike lanes, due to the width of the roadways on Main Street and the parking, it would be very inconsistent. It would have to switch from bike lanes to shareos. And this seems to be a more uniform way of addressing it.
Basically the problem they run into to have the bike lane they wanted, it would almost create another white line in the middle of the road, which would confuse people that... And if you did the dashes, it would confuse people like on a highway where you can actually pass. She came with a question of that, safety too.
The road has to be forty feet, forty-four feet wide to within a bike lane. And there's only two parts of Main Street that are forty-four feet wide. So, and then we were hoping that marking, we talked with Greg about possibly marking Second Street, First Street. And then those roads are definitely not wide enough for, and then again go back to the consistency. And the green boxes, those would be at the thirty-two Main Street light, Siskel Lee's light. And then over the Dairy Queen and University entrance. And then we also talked to Greg about Second Street, where Second Street crosses thirty-two because there are several people that ride to the houses from campus that way. And so those would be the four placements if approved. And we don't know when and if approved.
The good thing about doing something like this is once the state and the federal sees us doing things like this, they see a more opportunity to open up new grant opportunities for us. They see we're making that initiative. So this is the first step in initiative. It's, students have made it happen, so. We're just letters of support.
Still would be doing the painting, Public Works.
And they have the stencil, the bike stencil?
We would probably have to get that. I know the paint will be purchased by the program.
Yeah, I bought the plywood and, well, the grant bought the plywood. I didn't buy plywood. The grant paid for the plywood and Greg's going to make the stenciling with plywood. And we'll do it that way.
Who would maintain this?
Well, the city would have the continuous responsibility after that.
Is there, is this grant providing money for the city to paint and to maintain?
No, just for the paint.
Initials.
Yeah, the initial paint, but not the time. And there's going to be volunteers with the Public Works crew. So the plan is now that one person goes out and then it's volunteers that are helping with the placement of the stenciling. And the city, a city employee actually does the spraying. So instead of having two to three city employees out there, you would just have one. And the other couple of people helping would be volunteers.
Are the bike stops in this picture, they appear to be like a different color. Is that what you do when you actually paint the lane?
Well, bike stops are printed.
Is that what this is in the bottom? I'm assuming that's what that was. I guess this one's, that's a bike stop too, but this one?
These are the bike boxes that are replaced at the intersections. They would be green.
This one looks like it's been, yeah.
No, it'd be bright green. It's just where it's printed from, like the line.
No, I mean, but all that gets painted is my question.
Yes, this entire area.
And what color is it going to be painted?
Green.
Like it is, if you go to Lexington Bike Lanes, they're like that.
But we're talking about this whole area here. I don't know why it should be that way in this area, green. The top one doesn't look like it is painted that way.
It is painted red, the top one. But that's not a, for example, by the, our administration. Do things differently.
It's Canadians.
Yeah, it's maple leaf red.
So Mayor, do you see any issue with this?
I mean Greg is, Joe, you talked to Greg about it, haven't you?
Yeah, Greg and I talked and Greg, he did not like the lane slow. And they provided that this is the option. And I think it's the, of the options, it's the better option on that.
You're basically just stamping the streets saying that we're biking around.
Right.
But still, I mean, I'm still a little concerned for the safety of bikers because it's not, I don't know how much people slow down.
It's going to make it more safe than it is now.
Exactly.
That's right. It's making it more.
Does bicyclists follow the same rules?
Yes.
Yes.
Stop, turn, you know, we gotta make sure they do their signaling and all that.
Well, maybe it'll help because I followed one the other night. He comes into jury, his lights red, he turns, makes a U, comes back out.
Well, that's just like, that car's coming up tip hatting you all the time.
I just want.
Yeah, let's not talk just about the bikers, let's talk about everybody.
Oh no, I ain't talking about just bikers.
I know you are, I know you are.
You know.
But yeah, a lot of people do not follow the.
Stop signs are optional for many people.
Is this a common action item or?
Do we, do you want our, what do you want from us elect, do you want to take action on it April? Or do you want us to do a letter of support? What do you do at this point?
Well, we just want to keep you up to date on what's going on and make sure there's no issues. Because once these start painting, I mean, like I said, we've been talking with Greg and working with Greg. And with the, we're sending everything to the Department of Transportation for the state to make sure everything is being done correctly. We just don't want to get out there and paint and then you all say, hey, what are you all doing? We don't like this, so.
Are we okay with existing ordinances?
What were the four places that this was going to be?
Second Street and Thirty-two Connector, Thirty-two and Main Street, Batten and Main Street. And then what's?
Dairy Queen.
Dairy, yeah, I don't know the name of that street. Dairy Queen.
University.
It seems if you're at the university, it might be a minor.
Yeah, to be proper on the, yeah, names.
Do you think there's any hope for any bike lanes to be painted on the connector? I mean, we've been discussing that.
We've got, every time that they start to do that, we're on the list, so. We're definitely on the list now because they've gotten up letters from me, so.
Thank you, Joy.
I know there's twelve that's went to them. I sign my name differently every time. My name's Betty now.
And I don't know if you all need to take action on it.
No, you just.
That's the other thing, we didn't know that, so we wanted to just make sure.
No, I think we're fine. I think we'll just add it to, add to your information on your project. Any else, any other questions or anything else for Ms. April? Okay, thanks April.
Thanks very much.
Hi Jonathan, thanks Jonathan. All right, next we have item B, and that is the MSU Eagle Flag Downtown During Non-Holidays Project. Victoria Cable came and talked to me a couple of weeks ago and wanted to be on here and come up and speak. So I want to go ahead and turn the floor over if you all would. Let me come up here and turn it over to her and Brad Smith, MSU Athletics.
Okay, I'm gonna use this.
Yes, please do.
Again, my name's Brad Smith, this is Victoria Cable. We're with the, we're at the athletic department. And we're proposing a flag campaign to you guys today that we think will be a powerful reflection of pride, school spirit, and kind of tie the community to the university. So in place of the American flags during non-holiday seasons, we'd like to propose to put up Morehead State flags, blue and gold flags down, down Main Street. We counted the flag places and there's about fifty-five flag poles from that Speedway by the university all the way down across Flemingsburg Road down Main Street into the courthouse. Good Shepherd printing down there.
Five ninety.
Yeah, so we would provide the flags, we'd get and maintain the flags. If they get tattered, we'd replace those. That's kind of what we're proposing today. And she has some art here, kind of that we created, kind of give you an idea of what it would look like.
Individual copies.
It wouldn't be roughly the size of American flags now.
Roughly, yes. Same size. And again, the flags, we're looking at either gold flags, the eagle heads, or blue flags with an M, or it could be vice versa. Because we just thought that, you know, we put on roughly a hundred and fifty athletic events per year. So we have different universities coming into town here from across the country. And we just think that there's, needs to be a little bit more of a painting town blue and gold, if you will, at Morehead State. And once they come in here, they know, hey, this is Morehead State University, we're staking our claim here and showing a bit more pride and spirit for the university and athletes.
Now, when we originally talked, was this going to be on one side or both sides?
Yep, so the American flags only run down if you're going from the university towards Flemingsburg Road. They're only on the right side. The other side has kind of the street, streets on. So it would just be where the American flags are flying right now. So yep, just down that right-hand side if you're going towards, from the Speedway to the BP.
So you're saying replace the American flags with these?
Yep, so when, you know, obviously right now for, before Fourth of July and between that, you have those American flags up for that. But then when it makes sense to have them.
Not holidays, it's just up, other than holidays.
When we would normally have stuff up.
Yep.
When we would normally, we'd still keep the flags up there times and we'd have our decorations and stuff. When there's, when there's times when there's no, we don't have anything scheduled to be up, that's what we're talking about. They wouldn't replace the flags.
So we don't normally keep the American flags up?
No, no, they come, when I'm right, Joe, they go from Memorial Day to July fourth.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And nothing up after that?
And then, do we have Veterans Day?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And then we have the Christmas, that's pretty much, don't we? I think that's it in the joint.
They're not up Christmas.
No, I'm talking about the Christmas. So roughly, we got them up about, what, three months a year, roughly?
Do you have these types of flags hanging on campus too?
That's in the process, we're working on that, yes. This is kind of a start.
This is sample kind of flag, just so you could see what, what the size and.
Is that part of the way of finding sort of signs? And I went to a couple of meetings and you said it's in the process.
Well, there's, well, I don't know if that's part of that, but the other piece of it is to get them on top of our, some of our sponsor restaurants on the rooftops. Because I noticed other universities from outside Morehead State on the rooftops, some of our businesses here. So I'd rather have Morehead State stuff here within the city.
So is it something our people would just take them down when we're putting our stuff up? And then put theirs back up when we?
We've talked about that, she thinks that, she thinks, well, now we take the.
Our.
Yeah, ours are, I guess the question is, will we take the flag off, put that over? Or would you have your own poles, right, when we do this?
No, we would just use, all the equipment obviously is already there that the American flags attached to now. So they would just take the American flags off and then slide the ones that we provide back on.
Joe, are those, how are those attached, Joe?
The flag and the pole is one section. And they roll the flag when they put them away for storage to, so they don't get damaged. Because they're a, well, it's not a permanent attachment, but it's screwed into that pole bracket to hold it in. So the flag would probably have to provide a pole.
What's the pole made of, PDC?
PDC pipe, right, yeah.
So if we could get that, those, exactly how long the pole is, what size pole and all that kind of stuff.
I don't think that'd be a problem.
I don't think it'd be a problem with that because we're, we want to provide that and so.
So we would just take our pole and fly it down and put theirs back up, right, back and forth each time?
We can work with them on a schedule around our stuff. Because I can't think, can we think of anything else except besides the little side, the little, I call them banners. Besides the little banners, I don't know anything else we do, do we? I don't know.
Yeah, those welcomed Morehead last year as part of Trail Team.
Okay. I can't think of anything else we have besides Memorial, July fourth and Veterans. And I don't, you know.
But if we, if we did this and we had something special going on, the university would respect our wishes if we wanted to put something up for an event. We're not, what I'm getting at here is, we're not guaranteeing you thirty-seven weeks of the year that your flags are going to be up. They would be subject to a special event that we might have that we wanted to celebrate.
Is that what you're looking for or are you wanting?
Well, we were, that was kind of, again, supposed to discuss, but non-holiday, we'd like to have our flags up.
I thought was, it was my understanding it's going to be up on ballgames?
No.
No, it's a little sign.
Those are the things, the little, little.
That's what we're looking at, is having the flags up all the time, whether it's Morehead State or.
Like Western, Western houses.
Yes.
As you've.
The big red one.
Exactly, yep.
Well, the other thing that I would like to see in bringing this up is also Round County flags. I mean, I'm not saying get them all thirty-seven weeks, but you know, what about Round County as well? You know, you got ballgame nights, you got, I mean, I can understand having Morehead flags up as well, but you've also got Round County to support as well.
But are they wanting to buy the flags?
I'm not, I don't know. I'm not saying guarantee thirty-seven, thirty-seven weeks if that's what they're asking for us to do. And there's another school there to consider as well.
You got someone said Lakeside.
Yeah, I mean, no.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
No, no, what I'm saying though.
That was right, yeah. I mean, I mean, the bottom line is, people going to Round County games are going to Round County.
I understand.
So we're not recruiting.
I understand.
Wish for good, but.
But my point in saying is, is like Tom had said.
Well, I think.
I don't, I don't like the idea of guaranteeing thirty-seven weeks or whatever. I like Tom's idea of saying, you know, if we have something come up and we need to put the flags up, then we should be able to say.
I mean, I'm sure you all will be flexible with that.
We're flexible.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
If you're going to be flexible, I don't see an issue.
Anything else?
It's not like we have a bunch of stuff we're making flags for.
Right, it's basically, you get, you get them when we're not using them.
It's a good chunk, I mean, it's fifty-five flags, I think that's.
And we'll just say that, you know, we'll work it out basically like we planned, say, you get them when we're not using them. And that's major, vast majority of the time.
But our, our guys would do the up and down, our guys would take up.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we don't have a.
We get them by the truck.
The mayor was saying that you guys have, the city has, you know, ways and people to do that, so.
It's really not adding work because they're already up there taking them down.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Just swap them out.
Just swap them instead of leaning a line.
Just swap it if we provide the pole.
We're gonna say, yeah, we just need the measurements of exactly what is needed and that won't be a problem.
Joyce, do we need to take any action?
You're just asking for information, I guess.
Yes, that's all.
What about storage though, when we take them down?
Well.
And if you're putting just up the American flags, could they possibly be stored where American flags are? So then that transfer is pretty easy from one to the other?
Impound, impound yard in the garage.
That room?
They can be rolled and put away like we do. We have a garbage can, we put a cover over top of them, put a plastic cover over top of them.
We spare no expenses, that's all. But it is a clean garbage though. Yeah, okay, that sounds good. Is that okay with you? I've got a flag here before you leave anyway, but yeah. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Very much.
All right. Ms. Myra Mace. Ms. Myra and I were at the Brown County Unite Run Away From Drugs, Run Walk Away From Drugs. If I'd have ran, it would have been even something else probably, but that was on Saturday before last and. How many we had, a hundred? As far as everybody there, totally everybody, probably close to.
Everybody, I think we ran close to a hundred and seventy.
That's awesome. So give a little bit of a background if you would on your funding. And then, and where you are now, where you were, and then that'd be a good, that'd be a good place to start.
Alrighty.
Myra is, what is your position with Unite?
My position with Round Unite, I am the chair.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I have with me tonight Jade Hampton. He is the project two coordinator for the Morehead Inspiration Center. And the Round County Unite Coalition, for those of you who do not know, we're about prevention, awareness and education of substance abuse in Round County. And people depend on Round County Unite for educational materials, money for sustainable programs, volunteer support and partnerships for events. Families depend on us for information and support. Schools depend on us for materials and volunteer support for substance abuse programs for the children. The community as a whole depends on us for educational and informational programs and support. And for those in recovery, we are a gateway to the community. For the last five years, we have operated on a federal grant. This federal grant provided us two full-time staff members. And these two full-time staff members were able to coordinate a lot of our events and work in the school systems, work with different partnerships across the community. This federal grant also provided us money for office supplies, event insurance, repairs for new equipment, advertising venue fees, anything that can go along with running a business, basically. And we are continuing to filter many grants through Operation Unite. And these mini grants are applied for, by people across Round County. And it's a simple application. We do it for two terms a year, spring and fall. And last year, our mini grants were cut. Again, again, it was because of federal budget cuts and state budget cuts. We normally were allotted five thousand and it got cut down to forty-two hundred. And this money is targeted for each action plan that is submitted for the mini grants. And we also have to keep in mind that not all of the mini grants are approved when they are submitted from our people. When the word was out that Round County Coalition had lost its grant, we had a couple of panicked people in the county. They were coming up to us going, what are we going to do? We had no idea these people even followed us. And we told them that we are here and that we are not going anywhere. We're a grassroots operation again and we are going to be funded by donations and volunteers alone. And we're going to make it. We are here for the mother that says, thank you for giving me my child back. We're here for the person in recovery needing some kind of normal in their life. We're here for the child that needs confidence building and support, the educator who needs additional materials and positive life skills activities for their students. We're here for the community members who want more, informed and healthcare providers and professionals, law enforcement, judicial administrative councils, such as yourself, who want to see their community thrive through healthy lending habits.
How y'all doing this afternoon? I've got some handouts here for a few folks. If you would just take one and pass them around. It's more about the United Coalition here in Round County and some statistics, if you will, from the recovery outcomes that we do at the Inspiration Center. Briefly, I just want to mention that, how important Unite's been in the welfare and the recovery of the men at the Inspiration Center. You know, of the rallies, the 5K run and, and the things that they're able to do today without using some sort of substance to have a good time is a big, big part of recovery. You know, finding out that, I think, myself as an individual, when I came into recovery back in '09, I thought, how am I going to have any fun? And that was, that was huge to find out that I could live a normal life and have fun and still enjoy myself, in fact, more with, you know, these events and stuff. And I think the individual that's coming seeking help, I think Unite's important because there's a number to call, there's places to go, there's people who are there in place that can say, okay, this is what we can do. You know, and I think that's crucial. You know, I think the individuals in recovery, you know, unfortunately, we as a community, we only see the stuff in the paper about, you know, the disease and how it's affecting our community. We don't, we don't get to read in the paper when these individuals actually find recovery and find these resources and take hold of them and actually start being taxpayers and productive members of the community. So we don't, we don't see that in the paper, so. In turn, we don't sometimes recognize it as being something that works, you know, but it does. I'm fortunate enough to work in an establishment where I get to see lives change on a daily basis. You know, it's amazing to see guys come in who are beaten and broken from this illness and in turn it is, it has been and been researched and looked at more as a health issue now. It's not about moral standards or anything like that, it's, it's actually a disease. And, you know, treatment is there, but, you know, unfortunately, sometimes the funding is not. And I think that's, that's something that really needs to be looked at as, you know, a community because it is such a terrible thing, it's such a burden on the community. If you look at, one of the statistics there is at the bottom, the money saved versus the dollar spent on the individual in recovery versus legal fees, court costs and things of that nature that weighs on the taxpayer. I think that's, that's bottom, you know, I think that's huge. I want to thank y'all for your time and I really hope you consider this important matter.
And with that said, your financial support for the Round County Unite Coalition will provide additional workshops and trainings. It will fund many grants that are funded through, that are not funded through Operation Unite. It will fund many grants that are funded through, that are not funded through Operation Unite, that we believe that our community needs and wants. It will allow us to recognize those who have worked so hard for Round County and the United Coalition over the past several years. It will allow us to purchase additional equipment, supplies to use for educational purposes, allow such things for, uh, venue fees, advertising, rentals of U-Hauls for things like five Ks and the recovery rally. All of this costs money, it's, it's not an easy task to do, as most of you are aware. And your generosity in financing, in financially contributing to Round County Unite, will make a difference in our community, we promise you that. And tonight, we are asking the council, um, to help fund Round County Unite.
Ms. Mace, could you tell us what level you're asking for?
We would like five thousand dollars, if at all possible. And with this five thousand dollars, we can cover Round County. We can help, um, educational services, we can help after-school programs, we can bring trams in for our professionals in the counties. We discovered the other day that, um, we could not find support for a mother who has a child going through substance abuse. That was a tough, that was a tough pill to swallow. And the funding for this, we could partnership with someone else and maybe get those, um, kind of activities started here in Round County. And we appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them for you.
What, what did the mother need the money for?
Oh, she didn't need the money, she called us, uh, because we're used as a referral in a lot of cases, because they know what we work with. And the mother asked us for the name of some facilities that she can go to, to get support for herself to deal with her child. And that's all she wanted. And if we had the money in place, we could partnership with somebody and maybe make this happen for our parents here in Round County, because this is needed.
And pathways was not an option for her?
Pathways was not an option.
About fourteen years ago, uh, I was working for the middle school, uh, as Youth Service Center Coordinator, and I went to Frankfurt and watched, uh, was a part of a rally. Didn't know what Unite was, and, uh, I came back and it, it affected me so, so strongly that myself, Pastor Tim Rhodes, and Dana Quithenberry started Operation Unite fourteen years ago, our local coalition, and, uh, it saved my sister's life. My sister was able to get a grant through the parent, uh, Operation Unite and go get, uh, go to the Trinity Center in, uh, John Hopkinsville. And so it was something that, uh, at the time, they had a lot more funding, obviously, but remember, they would send people that you could get your, get your treatment paid for.
Absolutely.
And, and that's, that's, that's her option, she went, and, uh, it's not perfect like anything else, but it is a vehicle that we don't, that we would be sore to lose, in my opinion. So, um, it's something that, you know, everybody needs money, everybody gets cut, but it, it is something I think as a, as a, as a taxpayer, and someone who believes in it, and someone who's seen the positive, the positives, what greatly outweigh the negatives. And what'd you raise, thirteen hundred dollars at the thing?
Yes, we did.
So, they would take on the debt, we're raising thirteen hundred dollars at the five K, you know, we were, I, I do that with them every year and, and volunteer my services, so. It's something I think that is, there's so many people coming to ask and, and there's so many needs, but, uh, you know, we, we still have a problem in this community, and I think it's a, it's a positive way to help.
A problem in the community, and if we can save one child from even starting to pick up any kind of substance to use it, or if we can save one life, it is well worth it, that effort of theirs.
Chief Sexton was on one original board sport, chief, have you seen a lot of positive?
Are you needing that money immediately, or is this something?
This would be something to be fiscal, it'd be, it'd be, it'd start, it'd be fiscal year, it would be under a new budget cycle if we were able to do it. And this was, this was my idea. She said, oh my gosh, are you kidding, I said, I can't promise anything, I don't know, but, so, she got excited and got this young man to come with her and, we appreciate you coming, and they understand it's, you know, nothing's a guarantee, but I thought, at least you all need to hear that.
And we appreciate the time, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We don't have to take that song right now, we can do it, as we get to it. Oh, we have, uh, somebody that's not listening, I told him I'd let him step up. Mr. Bill, you wanna come on up?
Did it? Bowled it up.
This is the, uh, he passed this out, this is, I'll have to explain to you, but just so we understand, a lot of people don't realize, that's still in the city. It's the area out there where on Old Cranston Road behind, uh, Dairy Queen, where the Legion, the Legion.
Right. And, uh, well, I was coming to the council for us to request that, uh, the renaming of Old Cranston Road. When New Cranston Road was, uh, constructed, Old Cranston Road, uh, didn't have a name, so in lack of anything else, they called it Old Cranston Road. Uh, so we'd like to make that loop there that goes from the New Cranston Road, uh, back into the, uh, by the Dairy Queen there, uh, at the high school intersection. We'd like to have that named, uh, American Legion Way. Uh, the American Legion is, is located out there, and, uh, I think most of you are familiar with the American Legion. And the, uh, we're probably most known for our honor guard these days. Um, the, uh, our commander, Harry Clark, and, and our adjutant, uh, Ryan Rooks have, uh, uh, made the American Legion something to be proud of here in the community. And, uh, the, uh, so we would like to, uh, request that name change.
Is it safe officially? No, is that officially safe?
From the light at thirty-two, back to the BP, the stop sign, and back to the right towards Community Park, that is all state road still.
Well, can we write a letter of support to do that?
That'd be, that'd be a choice question.
From that intersection there, if you're looking, I mean, you don't have the pictures, so.
From the thirty-two intersection at the, the BP there, from the BP.
Back to Old Cranston.
Back, a lot between Dairy Queen and BP, back to the stop sign, and then turning right and going back towards Community Park.
But if you went west there, that, that's all.
Once you, yeah, if you go left there, from that point up the hill, all of the Cranston.
I thought it was really mad, wasn't it?
Is what, city?
That is city, yeah.
It's city and, and we wouldn't have to state approval.
How about that, Bill?
That would be fine.
That runs all Cranston Way, and that way, one of the problems they have, it's a beautiful building, if you haven't been out there, it's behind the, the, uh, Sports Services, uh, MSU building, one of the warehouses, it's beautiful. A lot of people don't know it's back there, if nothing else, it helps give you.
Right.
To, to, to show people where, where it is.
Mayor, would, would there be any, um, nine-one-one issue, E-nine-one-one issue with, uh, I mean, I support this, but I'm just thinking about from an E-nine-one-one standpoint, turning there off of, uh, Kentucky thirty-two, taking that right turn, it'd be great if we could get that part, also the same danger.
That would be, I guess, change.
The, the county has just given E-nine-one-one the right to name all the streets in the county, which I don't think he would have a problem with it, but it needs to go through the light.
That's the county, but I think we did the same.
Yeah, we did.
I think they copied our.
What you got?
Well, that's still, that's a state issue from what they're saying.
That, that short section.
That's a short section, that's what you're asking to try to get at, too.
I'm saying we should add that, we should request the State Highway Department or whoever, that that section be named the same. I think for E-nine-one-one purposes, it makes sense that that entire loop is, uh, American Legion Way.
What do you think about that? That part makes sense, doesn't it? A loop name for nine-one-one purposes.
From right here.
Would that affect E, financially affect your rental place?
So there's a section here.
Would that affect all this advertising?
MSU would be affected, wouldn't it?
Yeah, everything gets mail off at Rowan.
Maybe this a short section will be it, because it wouldn't affect anything other than.
There's several businesses that.
What you got?
No, I mean, he's talking about just back to the road, just that section there at the light, right?
That section at the light, back to the road is part of Viking Drive, it's a continuation.
Oh, it is, okay, so that's Viking Drive?
That is still part of Viking Drive, and they'll look back, and they asked to leave that when they dedicated the road to us.
Okay.
Because they had to have their building on a state-maintained road, and it also, the address issue wasn't, wasn't issued to the state at that time. But that's been a good one.
We'll have that if we look, eh, look into it, and see what we can and cannot do.
Well, yeah, and, and if we can't do the whole thing, then certainly from, um, the stop sign in front of Dairy Queen North.
Maybe we need to talk to, uh, what, what's the road that leads back between?
Dykes Road.
Dykes Road.
Do you only affect MSU Warehouse and American Legion?
I don't think they do.
And they get their mail up here, it's delivered out there, so.
Yeah, Sports Services is the only other building on there.
Yeah.
What about the road place?
Well, they're saying if you just name this.
It's down on the other road.
That's the Dykes Road.
Is it, is that a privately owned road? Todd Barforce owns the property, that's rental, isn't it? Or is it Dyke City?
That's a different road.
That's MSU's road.
That's MSU's road.
Well, there we go, we'll trade the flags.
Thirty-seven weeks, so.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven weeks a year.
Which, hey, which works fine, does it, and we'll have, we'll have American flags up anyway, it all works out. We, we'll look into it, Bill, okay? And once you follow up with us in a week or so, we'll look into it. If we did the whole road, it may have some expense change in all this. Yes, is that okay, Bill?
Yes, sir.
And you get back with me, we'll work with that, I promise you.
Thank you.
All right, and we got, uh, Adam, uh.
I got something.
Oh, yes, what? Well, hang on, hang on, I'm gonna do Rodney then, 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 okay. Rodney Fauch. And then we'll go Cam, then we'll go April.
I'm Rodney Fauch, on the flood committee that, uh, Mayor Trent, uh, appointed everybody to, well, all of us to. And we just kinda wanted to, uh, I mean, we've had three or four meetings, and we're really in the identification process. Uh, we, it, it's easy to say the creek floods and it rains a lot, and the water has nowhere to go, but we're trying to dig a little deeper. And, you know, it's really a three-legged issue, it's, it's, you know, the creek, um, can't support what it's getting because of, um, a lot of impermeable surfaces. Right, impermeable. That, that, that haven't always been there. And, um, so even if everything was designed properly fifty years ago, that was fifty years ago, and we're having some problems. The, the, the ground can't soak up the water they're used to, the, the, the water in turn gets sent into the, the city's drains, which are designed fifty years ago or longer, and so we're looking into what can be done on each point. We, um, are trying to get, um, you know, you can look at where the water rises first and say, oh, there's a problem there. But that's a common sense statement, and we wanna get some credibility, so we're trying to get with some engineers, we're trying to get with the state, and we're making some headway, we're trying to figure out where the funding's gonna come from to, to take on these projects that we, that we feel like we need to take on. And we're trying to prioritize them, so that we don't go on a wild goose chase and, and, you know, clean out a creek back down here and, and that didn't really get it, you know? So, we're taking all the help we can get, but we're trying to, we've kind of identified thirty-two and sixty as, as the, the main part of the problem to start with. But we just wanted to let everybody know that we are working on it, and we don't want it to, uh, we don't wanna lose, uh, prominence here. We don't, and, and we don't think this is gonna be a, a one-year fix either. I mean, we think this is gonna be a ten, twenty-year fix, I mean, I think we can make some progress in the first couple of years, but it's also gonna have to be ongoing. So, we wanna be able to present, uh, a, a way to help with the funding, we wanna be able to present a way to help with the maintenance and ongoing care that something like this is gonna have to have, that hasn't happened in the past, probably for budgetary reasons. So, um, just wanna stay in, in, in everybody's mind on this. If you have any questions.
Thanks, Rodney.
Thanks, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney.
Joe, do you mind to talk about the USDA grant that we're involved in right now?
Uh, the city has applied for a USDA grant, uh, through NRCS, uh, Natural Resources Conservation Services, uh, for help in cleanup. We have, uh, through the flood committee, uh, everyone has submitted areas and places that, uh, they feel were issues during the flood, that they feel need to be cleaned up. That in turn has been put into the application, uh, which was turned over to the NRCS, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And they have been in town and have looked at several of the locations, and they are prioritizing on their list, and they will let us know when they choose, or if they choose to do some of those locations. One of the big locations that they looked at, they would like to, from Enterprise Rent-A-Car, where everything goes underground behind the Methodist Church, or beside the Methodist Church, they would like to come through that culvert to clean that out. Uh, they have a new machine that runs off of, uh, battery operation that they can go through the entire thing and clean it completely out, which would help us immensely. There are some other silt problems in areas that they can clean out, uh, that they feel would help. So, uh, if they're able to do that for us, uh, it's a grant match, uh, the city would be responsible for twenty-five percent of the cost, they would pay seventy-five percent of that cost. Uh, but in those areas that they would do this for us, it would be an extreme help in our flooding and a lot of our stormwater issue.
And it's, they have, it is a dark team that came in here, and the flood committee, all of us wrote down areas, took pictures and did all this. When they get back with us, we don't know the total amount that will be given yet, but it's an in-kind match, they'll pay seventy-five, uh, city will come up with twenty-five. And it has also led us to a federal grant, uh, with five federal agencies, that if we get adopted by one of these agencies, it's kinda hard to explain. It's the type of grant that possibly could bring in the type of money to hire a firm to come in here and do a long-range plan. Might take six months to a year, um, bringing the type of people that could look back in history as to what has caused our problems and develop a long-range plan to help us start taking care of the main problems, like up NAP and some of the edge areas, and clean out, um, to help our, you know, to help the problems that are actually causing like sixty and thirty-two, uh, and other areas.
My mind is, there's fourteen different things, or fifteen different things that cause the flood, it's not one thing. So I wanna, I'm in bed for taking lead on this, she and Sherry Farley are the, she's a FAWI, and she is, uh, on the, uh, Frontier Housing, she is, those two are co-chair, and, uh, we've got a really good grip on there, I think, so they're moving forward, that's something that, just because it's not flooded, don't mean that we have to let it go. So I think a lot of ours, what they're looking at too, is a lot of preventative maintenance, we don't, we've never done a lot of preventative maintenance, we've already been reactive, so we're gonna try to, with this study, see what we can do, we kinda, what, what we can, so. Yes, I, I appreciate, thanks Rodney. Uh, Cam, you wanna go, and then, were, were you gonna piggyback on the flood, or you got something else, April?
Have something more.
All right, go ahead, Cam, Cam Lander.
I just wanna bring up an issue affecting me, my business, and a lot of other people, I think. It's the issue of the, um, council approving checks for expenditures. I didn't know that this was created, I've been at the, every city council meeting since January, I've really never heard anything about it. I know this hasn't been, um, true in the past, um, it's a new thing, I just wondered how this came about and how we can get rid of it. Cause it really puts a burden on us, our suppliers have cut us off, cause we can't pay them, because you guys don't pay us, so. It's a big problem.
And I think we're gonna.
We're gonna discuss that, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna discuss that, we're gonna discuss that, or you just wanna look?
Yeah, that's fine, I just thought that this was the approval of the bills and statements, I didn't know that was actual discussion of.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss that.
Cam, which business do you operate?
Hope, Brooks and Rogers.
Um, April.
Um, so about a month and a half ago, um, I received a call, I'll go over to the podium. That's what it's here for.
Yes.
So, about a month and a half ago, I received a call, um, um, related to the wetland, uh, the location of the wetland projects that we're putting in down in the Holland. And, um, it was, um, from Sally, she had called because she had plans for a community garden at that location. And, um, I informed her that she might not want to have one down there right now, I didn't know she'd been down there lately, to, to see that it was actually a construction site. So, after, um, talking a little bit with Sally, I came up with another idea. So after talking a little bit with Sally, I came up with another idea. Sally, do you want to just introduce yourself?
I'm Sally, I'm Sally Netherwood.
Sally called me about three months ago to leading up to this.
Yes. Okay, so this is all the mayor's fault.
Most things are.
Yeah, it's always your fault. You're in charge, so. The, um, but anyways, so I just was thinking of another location to still accommodate, because I really like community gardens and the idea, and I wanted to support what she was doing. We talked about maybe incorporating it still into the site there, but after looking at it and looking at some other sites, we felt that the FEMA lot that the city owns that's on the corner near the Save-A-Lot, kinda behind Save-A-Lot, and what's the name of the street that runs there?
Clearfield Street.
Clearfield Street. And, um, is there on the corner, is maybe placing the community garden at that location. With the understanding there's no fences or other things, any permanent structures allowed to go in place on the FEMA property. So right now, it's just a vacant lot. It's just being mowed. The city is currently mowing it and what Joe suggested that we come and get approval, he felt that it was something that the city council would actually need to do an approval on, is using the lot for that. There are some benefits, not just to building a community garden, you know, for that community there at the site. But the site is very compact and very filled. It actually acts almost as a concrete surface right now. By putting a garden in the place, you're actually making it better at absorbing rainwater and through the site too, which is a part, I guess indirectly, a piece of the water shed. The idea of having a green space that absorbs water. So in order to do that, we would have to bring in some soil. It's not very good for gardening. I spoke with Greg Jones. He said that he could take some of the soil from the wetland site down to there and spread it over to an area to get her started. Sally's been in touch with Molly Carew and Ms. Franzini also about, because they're involved with the community gardens that are over here across the street. And she's also been in touch with the MSU farm. We're getting fertilizer brought into the site. So she's been doing a lot of background and knows what she's getting into by taking on this effort. So what we need though, before anything can be done in dirt, is permission to be able to use FEMA property in that area. So we're talking about six ten-foot plots approximately would be the space for getting started. And one of the other questions we had is if permission was given to use it for a community garden spot, would the city still mow, since they're mowing? Would they still continue to mow around the garden plots, not in between the garden plots and all that? But the area that's not being used, because the area is quite a bit bigger than the space that they're asking to get started with a community garden.
Are there any community gardens on city property? What about insurance? Having somebody on there with insurance would be big city property.
Yeah, so the county is buying...
We aren't insuring all the property anyway. We went on the city park property there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's basically, it's public property.
I was gonna say, like, the county, they said it does not affect their insurance, and their liability insurance or their property insurance by taking in, like, doing extra side projects, because they're getting ready to buy some wetland property to preserve and restore for flooding purposes with the three nineteen funds.
Who would be in charge of deciding who gets what plots from land?
That would be, well, you can correct me on this, but I don't think we haven't been able to accommodate anybody whose house.
Through Sustainable Morehead. Right, right. We, Sustainable Morehead has two community garden plots, one in Ford's, two in, right back there, by their corner. And, and, you know, we have extra spots. I mean, it is not, I mean, I guess there could be a waiting list, but we have never had a, we have never told anybody no at one of the spots, so.
Would it be feasible to allow it to go through Sustainable Morehead, let's let them take, go, be able to?
Well, Sustainable Morehead is already doing two gardens. And these work better if there is a person within the community kinda taking the responsibility and the lead on it. Because even the second community garden that's been picked up, that's not the same lead as this garden down here. So it's people who live out there who have taken that on as kinda the main watchers and keepers.
Right, and Molly Carew and I met with Sally on Saturday morning and we discussed our system and our, we have a little contract. And, you know, we don't have a lot of paperwork and all, but we have a, a system so everybody understands how it works. And so we gave it all.
Certain standards that you wanna be able to...
Yeah, just, you know, common sense and, you know, that sort of thing sometimes needs to be spelled out.
How many vacant spots do you have?
We have ten. We have ten vacant spots right now, to my knowledge.
Yes, and, and those are gonna be promoted through Sally's church. She's gonna help promote those spots to work together. Yes, or with the potential of the spots that are here until they can get, because it kinda takes time to build up the community garden. So it's not like she would be able to go out tomorrow and have a, a garden, like, like that. So it would be able to work upon it.
So we need to entertain this. It's a resolution.
We motioned to pass the resolution allowing the use of, I don't know what the address is.
I'll get the exact address.
The address.
And you wanna say it?
Specific address down.
Uh, working in conjunction with, to say or not?
We, we don't feel like we can take on.
Okay, all right.
Well, we will be glad to be an advisor or anything like that, but we, we don't, we feel we have enough right here.
Resolution letting use of a community yard.
There you go.
And you, yeah, the problem is we don't have an entity to put in the resolution to say who we're giving it to, right?
You wanna, now, you, you called originally with some ladies at church, is that correct?
Pardon?
It was some ladies at church when you originally called, but you all, they were wanting, interested about it.
Yes, I talked with someone, some of the ladies at church, or some of the people at church, and they were interested in gardening.
You wanna, can we call the church, whatever her church, can we call that site, that, or is that fine? What church do you attend? I'm sorry.
Johnson.
That's what I thought. Johnson? And what is called it, the Johnson?
Well, maybe it's, you know, that we should put a pending and submitted plan for how it's gonna be.
I don't think that they would want all the spots or anything like that.
Right. Yeah, it's not for the whole area, it's just for getting started.
Started.
Yes, and the hope is that...
I think we're getting started. Let's, let's do it. Let's add my motion.
You've got ten here?
Pending of submitted plan in the operations.
And that's seconded.
So something would have come up, something to say, who's, how you doing there?
See, I, I think we just need to make it clear that whoever does this, whatever the entity, it's their gig.
Right.
You know, the city's not, you know, we're not bringing dirt in, we're not building garden boxes. It's the group's responsibility to take care of the site.
Okay, so initially though, with the...
Initially, we'll bring dirt in.
Just on the first couple of...
If we, if we have dirt.
Initially, we'll bring the dirt in.
Well, it would just be from this site here, and that was what we had talked about, but they don't do the mowing or anything else.
But we're not leveling the dirt, we're not shoveling the dirt. I, I mean, I, I just wanna be clear about this. How much?
But we'll continue to mow, right, Joe? We need to.
We'll continue to mow, but we're...
Not in the garden.
Not in the garden.
Four to five inches of dirt, does that all work out?
Four to five inches of tilled-in dirt.
Yeah, whatever is okay with...
We're not gonna go a foot or anything.
Who's tilling it? Are we tilling it?
No, no, the city is not tilling it. And the city is not gonna be hauling it.
And she was involved?
And maybe she has got to talk to that. It's just the initial dirt load.
So amended my motion, Jane, is that clear? Pending a submitted plan of how it's gonna be operated and, and maintained.
Does that city plan need to, or does that plan need to come back to the city council or just... So do you hear next month?
If they have an issue, they need enough to talk to, and all those kind of things, I mean. So, that's just something simple to say, if they just have it on, do it, and they're adopting the same system as Sustainable Morehead is, and so, more contact. Are you okay with that amendment, Jane?
Yes.
Well, we'll have, we'll have you all come back with a plan, who's gonna use it, phone number, contact, basic stuff, okay?
Okay.
All right, yeah, thank you. You can work with this lady here, she's done it a couple of times.
So, well, I've just been...
You can be the liaison, April. You're the garden czar. We're gonna, I'm gonna... I know, that's her, okay. Then you go ahead and vote on it, then. All those, uh, let's, let's go ahead and hear the roll call, please.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini? Yes. Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other public comment? Anybody else? All right. We'll move into item six, quarterly reports. First up, Downtown Morehead Inc., Brother Tony Fins.
We use everybody. We'll start out with, we, we operate in committees, so I'll just give you our committee reports. In the second quarter of this year, we added two new members to our board. Cam Lander was added, he accepted a position, as did Dan Markwell. We do have one position open at this time, and we do have a person that we have in mind for that. I don't wanna get into that at this point in time, unless you really wanna know. And then we have the design committee, the things we're working on, of course, with the mural project is continuing to go one. And we're also working with the parking. We're working on the parking issue with town, and the mayor's appointment. We work with this on that. We've gotten, we're free, got some stuff, national publications on how to get parking right in a small town. And so we're working on that, you know. We don't have any answers at all. We do have lots of questions and we're approaching it from that standpoint.
Can I ask you a real quick question as you get your glasses out there? What, what is the timetable on the murals? What do you think?
We really don't have one. We do have, interest in that is growing, you know. We do have, these obviously take money. The Kentucky Arts Council at times has money and times they don't have money. There is talk right now of some private investment into some of that. The building owners, a couple of building owners that we've discussed may be interested in doing that. And so that's, you know, maybe coming, you know, that's part of, gonna be part of what I'll get to here in a minute with the, the planning thing, what we're doing. You know, the murals will be part of that long-term plan. These to create place, they create destinations of sightseeing and that type of thing. And you make it, you're restoring to a destination. And we have certainly some great stuff to paint it. We have Ally Young, who helped get the university here. We have one designed right now is a First Street, an eighteen eighty-seven version of the First Street, which was railroad street at the time. That has Frank and Phoebe Button on their, their stuff. They're sitting on the dock at the train station, you know. So, and this Coral Wilson Stewart is a veteran from that mural as well. We got an idea for Ally Young. You know, I'm trying to put the sale on Cam and his family there, that, you know, they're, they're descendants of Ally Young. At Holbrook and Borbury there, that would be a great spot for that. I've talked to the guys, well, I've talked to Dan, you about the, where the Fuzzy Duck is right now. They got a huge big wall. I had an artist there look at it the other day and it's ready to go, where it's textured. That's a beautiful thing. So we have places to put these. We've talked to Jane about the wall, Pasquale's, about that eighteen eighty-seven mural. So those are, to answer your question, that's where that is, and, and that's being done. It's just, that's a slow process in finding funds for that. And then, you know, of course, the private investment that would go into that too. And then, of course, the design committee that we've been working, you know, we're getting ready to, I guess, talk about the stop sign. And I'll let you guys, we won't go into that, but that's where those things came from over the last couple of years. To slow traffic down and turn downtown into a pedestrian density per, place where people can actually sit out. The ordinance, the sidewalk ordinances we know are being reviewed right now to where we can allow outdoor dining, that type of thing. We currently don't even address that, I don't think, in our ordinances. So those are things that the design committee looks at, and we're pretty excited about being able to look at the parking. We realize that's gonna be a hot topic about how to handle, what is the best way to do that? But we do feel that going into the planning process, having that parking issue partially right anyway is gonna be important. We have Jamie Breeze at Tourism, we have Main Street business owners, myself, Madonna, whether it's at university, are on that committee discussing parking. So it's, we're in the process right now of getting to know our town, if you will. How many parking spaces are there on Main Street, for example? You know, we wanna know those things going into where we can actually talk about and plan. And then the Economic Restructuring Committee is probably the most exciting thing we've had going on in a long time. New Cities has taken, uh, they, they have been joining the disvisiting process that we've been discussing for the last few months. I'm sure many of you are aware of. But New Cities has joined up with Downtown Morehead's Economic Restructuring Committee, and that brings a lot of stakeholders to the table. And we're discussing right now, and we do, I guess it's okay to talk, we have financial commitments from university, from the hospital, from tourism, and the city to hire Element Design as a planning firm. That will help us design a long-term fifteen, twenty-year plan for Downtown Morehead. And I wanted to jump up, I'll go over, talk about the flooding thing about, because that's all gonna come into play too. You got the grant that Joe worked on a couple of years ago, that, that TAP grant that's coming into play that's gonna help with that flooding, hopefully. So there's lots of good things going on, but this, this, for the first time ever in our city, private skin's in the game. It's not free grant money that we're getting from somewhere. We've got the hospital, university, tourism are putting funds up, which gives us some teeth. And we're looking forward to bringing Element Design in. They did some of the work on West Main Street, down around Allen's IGA, that you've all been down there and seen the fence and the flowers, the flower beds and that kind of thing. But it'll, that's who we're bringing. It'll be a fifteen to twenty-year plan that's gonna encapsulate all of these things that we've talked about tonight, as far as flooding and the streets and wayfinding and flags. We've been trying to get the university to bring us flags for two years. So, you know, thank you for, for that, you know. That, that's, that's, that's easy stuff right there. And, but the, we're very excited about that, the planning thing that we've got going on. We're very, very excited about that. We think that's really gonna have a big impact. And then as far as our promotions committee, we just completed a Day in the Country in the Trail Fest. We made, I actually may want to speak to that. We had over thirty-five vendors on the street, probably ten of those people traveled from out of state and spent the night here. We, I, I don't know the number of folk art vendors that was in the conference center, but it's a pretty good number of people.
I think he said it was over twenty out-of-state vendors.
Right, a bunch of them. And we had a lot of collectors that traveled.
Twenty different states, is what he said, yeah.
And I do know that there were collectors that traveled here from Louisiana, as far as California and, and Washington and Oregon. Were here to collect and buy folk art that were here. So these things do make a difference. I think if we were able to pull out, you know, our sales receipts for the weekend, you know, on motel rooms and restaurants and stuff, we, we would see that these things matter to us a lot. And, and, and we're, at, at least, and we're doing well, we, with these functions. Uh, we have, the next thing that we have on the agenda is Freedom Fest. You know, that'll be in the next quarter, but it's, we're already planning that. We expect to have upwards of six, seven thousand people in Downtown Morehead for the fireworks display on July the third. That's working with the Governor Scholar Program that's gonna solidify our hold on them, that we hold. And that's our goal anyway. But the Fourth of July fireworks display will be on July third, right here in downtown.
MSU got the bid.
Yeah, we got the bid.
MSU did get the bid?
Yes, they did, for the next three years. So we're doing things...
We're not giving enough, so we're gonna do whatever we can to get it.
We're gonna have to come take it from them. So we're doing everything we can to keep the four hundred and seventy-five kids coming every summer. We want that. And, but outside of that, you know, we just wanna thank everybody for the cards and the letters and the good wishings for me. And, because I've got a lot of help on the board there and they, 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 they come to play every day. And we're doing some things, so if you have any questions about them, whatever.
Do you have any idea when Element Design will have their plan for us?
Well, we have to hire them first and pay them some money. That, that's the thing. I'm waiting on the checks. I sent the letters out to those institutions who have pledged money. We've invited the county to play, the fiscal court. Did talk to the judge Saturday and, you know, they're, they're hand-wringing motion right now. So hopefully they will be able to get that worked out a little bit and they'll come to play. Because they need to be, as I reminded him, every magistrate, to my recollection, had a, had a constituent in the city. They all do, don't they? So they are a part of the city, whether they want to be or not.
Can you, in terms of the fireworks display, where, where is that taking place at?
Well, we just had a meeting, we, we had a couple of meetings over. The first meeting, we, we wanted to move it to downtown for several reasons. The first thing that came up was, well, we're gonna shoot it off over here in the Parkin's property, right here off of City, the lodge across the bridge. Well, obviously, we got a bulk plant right across the creek from that. So that creates, you don't wanna be on CNN or anything.
Well, that was gonna be the finale, but we tried to skip that.
So we brought all the players together, the chief, fire chief, and police chief, and Joe was... So we brought all the players together, the chief, fire chief, and police chief, and Joe was, has been involved in it. Because Joe is up to the fire chief and Joe here. If they don't want to have it, we can have it. So, you know, we needed to do our due diligence, and so we had a meeting there the other day. We had the construction company come in that will be shooting Cottle Construction, that shoots those. And we think we've got that covered, you know, the people and all that. They'll be shot from right over here, and they'll be shot in this direction once we're Jane Stadium. Is I'm right in that direction? That's the direction it will be.
Up river.
Up river.
Yeah.
Thunder Rower Triplet, you know. And, and we're going to.
By the way, he's the one that came up with that. I think it was great. Well, and the thing about.
You guys repeated it, though.
We did, we did. Tom, the thing is, they, Shane and Cottle brought his, the meeting we had, he brought the fallout. He has scale. It all depends on what size shells they're going to shoot. For example, out at the airport, they shot eight-inch shells, 10-inch shells.
10 and 12.
10 and 12. They're going to shoot four and six here, which is not necessarily a reduction in the quality. They're going to actually be able to shoot more because they're smaller. Well, that has a fallout radius depending on weather. And, and Chief was there, and we feel like we're fine. They're going to adjust it a little bit. For example, we're going to let people sit on the Little League field and the fields and watch it, you know, lawn chairs and blankets. Well, now, based on that drawing, no one can sell the Little League field. So we've, and we, and the permits are on my desk to be signed and sent back in, so.
It's, it's, due diligence. We've done everything we can do to make that a safe event for downtown.
What is it, $4 million?
There's any. They have $2 million.
$5 million, she said.
That's our aggregate. That's what they got new, didn't they?
Yeah. Yeah, show Tom that. Does that have the?
This is the fallout. You will see here how far you can go.
Based on the size of shells. That's what that is.
And the fire department will also have, of course, the big hazard there is following smoldering cardboard that's falling to the ground is an issue with fireworks. So, fire department will have a misting machine over there around the bulk plant that will be misting that area so that nothing like that will fall in that perimeter there. Hopefully, we won't get anything.
No extra.
We'll all get to meet, what's the guy, Anderson Cooper. So we're going to try to do our best to make sure nothing happens. We look forward to that. We think this will be a huge event. We can turn, traffic can, we can handle lots of traffic in the city. You know, at the airport, it was one way in and one way out. Here, people just come to town and they can leave as normal. It'll be crowded for half an hour or so when it comes time to leave. There's other things going on that day, and I don't know the list of that evening. We're going to have a parade for the Governor Scholar. They will be parading.
It's on Friday.
It's Friday, well, this is.
This is Friday too. This is all on Friday. At 5 o'clock, we've got the 5K Outball, 1/5K World Run, which will be starting at Jane Stadium. GSP's putting it on. At 6, 6:15-ish, when that's over with, that'll be downtown too. Then we're going to have the parade with GSP and Gravity Falls Motorsports. Cars will be in that.
That's an addition to that. And then, of course, it's a Moonlight Stage. First Street will be closed, and we'll have vendors and porta potties. And we've got some music going to be happening.
We can have lots of vendors and porta potties there.
And we'll also have people, we'll have concessions being sold over here in the city park.
We're looking forward to it.
A lot of people for that. There's never been one where we haven't had a lot of people for it, so we don't think that's going to be any different.
Any questions for Tony? Other than that, it's been pretty quiet, hasn't it?
It's been going pretty smoothly. We've had.
Thanks, Tony. Alrighty, utility board?
It was a very quick meeting, so we'll give a quick report. If you looked at the minutes, we actually met for 16 minutes. It's a special-called meeting, and so we couldn't talk for anything. It appears that our, both our revenues and expenses, budgeted pretty well, right on target. So it's going to be a good year, about what we expected. Water loss is a little bit uptown. They're adding some, what, calendar, putting in D W in places to try to find out where stuff's going. Yeah. But, other than everything's going pretty well. They've had some personnel issues trying to get things covered the last three months because of people out for both the charities and families that they've been in pretty long term, so. I'll answer any questions that I can. We did move the meeting for 16 minutes, so.
Any questions for Glenn, are you there?
Yeah, I think I have.
Go ahead, go ahead. Glenn, the sewer line, the Forest Main going out to the MSU farm, what status is that in?
They've started the process with it. I don't think they've got anything in the ground yet. That's part of that dorm, you know, it's going in.
So is it delayed? It says here completed by July 1/15. Probably pushed out a couple of months. Okay. And then I think you had covered the water loss, and glad that it'd be nice if we could figure something out on that.
Yeah, they're actually.
That was it, thank you.
Anything else, anybody? All right, number eight, in Morhead State. I don't think anybody's here from Morhead State. I talked to, talked to Beth Patrick earlier. Everyone is family things, everybody's, no one can make it tonight, so she sent her apologies. She said it wasn't anything other than they were just going to update what's going on with destruction, and it's moving along along. Didn't have anything really. GSP moves in this month.
20th.
Yeah, 20th, and go ahead.
Father's Day.
Father's Day.
The faculty and staff will be here on the 16th of September.
Yeah.
I've noticed that several of the construction projects have not started.
I was going to ask the same question, because I don't think any of them started, huh?
I haven't seen one, so.
Other than getting ready with the Ada property, they're doing a lot of underground stuff, aren't they, Joe? They're, they're working on utilities and stuff a lot, aren't they?
No, that was the electrical. Yeah, that's not, Ada doesn't start till next year.
I thought it was all tied in, I didn't know.
Waterfield was supposed to be the first one, huh?
Yeah, and there's nothing going on.
Yeah, I don't know.
So it's pretty, what the whole of this.
Well, that'll make for a good report in July, so. So, if there's anything pressing, I can get her an email if you all want to know. We can maybe ask her. All right, Joe, future growth and development projects for the city.
If you have any questions, you have my sheet on that.
Joe, the project to begin on Oxley Drive, for these single-family houses, have they renewed their building permit?
They have not received a building permit. The planned review on that is complete, and within the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks, I'll probably send them a letter that they'll have to resubmit due to the factors.
It's been over a year, I think.
It's been close.
Yeah, okay.
Are those going to be rental units, or is that for the people that are living there now? No, they'll be individual houses, single-family dwellings. That would be utilized about 1,000 square foot, 900 to 1,000 square foot each, and they would be individual houses. And you would probably rent them, was the first intent.
So.
It's been used as a parking lot right now, that's why.
There's 10 or 12 cars there now.
I mean, any given night.
How many folks seem to be in it?
The house, and then you go across the door, these are going. Yeah, you're right, there's, maybe 10, 12.
Jack Bizzle contacted me, and I think he contacted several other council members about, you know, the whole entire neighborhood up there is changing. And, you know, for the older residents, there doesn't seem to be the level of respect from the students or the older residents. And Jack asked to see if we could, you know, because we have a, we have a noise ordinance, I think that kicks in at 10 o'clock. If we could, and again, this would be when schools in session, increase patrols up there just to make sure folks know that they need to respect the rest of the neighborhood, not just the students. But I, you know, when you see 12 cars parked outside one single-family house in the middle of the day, you're wondering, how many folks can you pack into one house? And are we willing to address how this is going to change the entire nature of our neighborhoods? Because more and more houses are being bought up for students, and, you know, they just pack them in.
Is this just getting to your neighborhood?
No, it's been happening in my neighborhood, but.
It's growing with the fast.
It's growing, because there's several houses for sale in our neighborhood.
Yeah.
They're going to probably get bought up by some parents, and then they'll just pack the students in. There'll be parking issues and noise issues. And are we going to address this as a city, or we're just going to let it be a free-for-all?
How long's it been up in our neighborhood, Jane? About eight years now?
Is that something that needs to be addressed with?
They've done nothing so far.
The density thing, is that what we talked about some on there, is that it's new construction?
Well, that would be on new construction, but we can look at the end of doing something more. If you'd like me to take it to planning, to see if they would come back with revised recommendations.
I don't know about Tom builds, I don't, but I see that as a, as a fire hazard. I see that as a safety issue. I see that on, on at least that level. There's other levels too, but I mean, my goodness, I can't imagine, I'm just looking at it safety-wise. You know, from the, starting there. There's many other things you could add to that, but am I right about that? Is that potential safety it is?
What if you have a family, a single family with that many?
Now, that's a beautiful thing.
But it's still the same safety.
It is the same thing, I know. I mean, I live right across the street. I'm sure there's 10 kids living in that house.
Yeah, it's a three-bedroom house.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's a tricky.
Begin to address.
How does, how do other university towns address this particular issue?
I don't know. I guess we can look into that.
Have you ever been on State Street?
As I say, I mean, you go to Lexington, it's just as bad.
How many people you can get in a hall?
My son was involved in that.
Yeah, I know you can't that way. I don't know about Marie or.
I'm sure they're all that way. I mean, every, every kid's trying to live cheap, and they hardly sleep, so.
But then one house on Oxley Branch, or it's not a Wilson, but you park on Oxley Branch, I counted 12 cars there.
Yeah, there's 13 cars.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a three-bedroom house with one, maybe two bags.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a tough thing, because if you talk to the landlord, and I know the city did send a letter to the landlord of the house across from us saying no more parking on the grass, and I guess they're not doing that now.
Another park in the midst, he's expected to.
But, you know.
What about parking on sidewalks? Is that permitted in the city, Morhead?
Not on sidewalks.
So, I constantly come by houses on Wilson Avenue where people are parking on sidewalks.
Right up on them?
On the side, it's blocking the sidewalk.
Yeah. On their sidewalk of their house, or on the sidewalk of the road?
The sidewalk that is parallel to the city street.
They're off the street, but they pull into the driveway and they park them.
No, they're not pulling into the driveway, they're just pulled, they're just pulled up the sidewalk. And I mean, this is a car that's been parked there overnight, not just, not parked in about five minutes.
I mean, you know, some communities have a neighborhood association, and they kind of have some guidelines and deal with that. And, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you deal with it. But if there's 10 cars there on a regular basis, you know there's not just five kids living there. I mean, that's just common sense.
Maybe it's something we can have, have them look at, Joe, I don't know.
I mean, is there an ordinance about how many people can live in there?
Well, I know, see, that's it. It's very tricky. Yeah, unrelated people would be the word, you know, if you.
Well, if you do that, then you're, you know, you're affecting somebody's economic ability to use the property for as much as they can get out of the property.
Well, are there, are there any guidelines regarding, let's, let's just use this as an example. A three-bedroom house can house 10 people, 10, 20 people, five people.
It's by the square footage of the house, and it would be based on either standards of life safety from the fire marshal's office. If it's existing, or it would be based on building code related from the building side if your building is new. And, yeah, you can get 10 people unfortunately in a fairly small space. It's not something that's kind of cringe when you see the figures, but it's, you can get quite a few.
Yeah, I don't know. It's a growing problem on Wilson Avenue, I do know that.
Among other places.
I know, I know.
You're right, though. Okay, anything else for Joe? Anybody else? Everybody wants to know, cookouts moving along, I guess?
Slowly, they had a hangup on their permit. They didn't submit, so they're behind on it.
So if they'd rather your service a little quicker. All right, let's see. Then go move on to number 10, approval of payment of monthly bills and statements.
So we'll come with payment of monthly bills.
Any discussion? Here you go.
Can I discuss it, or is that just?
That's coming on, hang on. This is just approval. Go ahead, call roll, please.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Karu?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Ustley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
General business agenda, Anthony Smith? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, now we can go ahead and discuss it.
We can't discuss this anymore. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
We're in for the bills. They're asking about the other part, we have to repeal the previous municipal order. Correct?
I guess, yes. It is.
What, what, what number are we on now?
It was combined in your agenda, but you have an order there, an action item, to repeal the order that we did in February.
Well, that's what I'm looking for.
There were two attachments to that agenda.
What item was said on the agenda?
It's part of.
Part of number 10?
Yeah, and there's attachments. You have in the packet.
It's probably attached with the memo. It's behind the memo for approval, Tom. Maybe I'll get it in the packet.
Yeah, I'm looking in my packet.
It's behind Carlos' stuff.
Okay.
Now go down here and open it. Well, here's where you're going to go. And then go down there and open it.
The administrative staff has asked that you repeal it, Mr. Biff. It's shown to create extra additional work in time, and it's also an executive function, not a legislative function. And we have had some late payments. I don't think we've incurred any late charges yet. But like, an example, if we get a bill tomorrow, it wouldn't be approved until July 13th, which is clearly past 30 days, which is the normal term for payment of bills. And then some things that aren't on the list that you exempted, we're having to make a decision as to whether to go ahead and pan or wait. And we would just ask that you repeal this. You'll still get a list of everything that's been paid that you can look over every month. And if you have questions, bring it up for discussion.
So it becomes more like what we did at the plant port, where you ratify.
Exactly. And the problem instead of, where the problem came to my attention, besides individual vendors or people that we have here at this meeting, was I talked to Carla about it. Carla said, she said, look, she said, I've had to call and beg, beg people not to, not to give us late fees. You know, and, and because of the way that it works, you know, most people are net 30 on payments. And several times, you've had to call people and try to, try to get them not to give us late fees. Am I correct?
I've had to call a couple vendors for a late fee.
And what that does, that hurts our credit rating and so on and so forth. It's just not a, you know, it's one of those things where it's really difficult for administrative staff, her in particular, and to get them out on a timely matter when you factor in all things that can disturb it, such as, you know, talking about holidays and everything else in the world. It makes it very, very difficult.
So the municipal order that you're proposing just does away with it, it doesn't offer?
We can change that. I can amend it if you want. It's eight. We'll repeal that one, and then from now on, ratify payment. I can reword that.
I will move that.
Second.
And that one enabled it, okay.
And I'll reword it.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
I don't mind going to ratify the case process. I mean, we, we've done this for school board forever. I mean, our rule is basically that it's going to be late, that's allowed to be approved. We still are presenting it. But we also tell our vendors upfront, you get paid. If you want to do business with us, you're going to get paid after the board meeting. It's my work. And 95% of our vendors just understand that. I'm okay with just going to ratify it.
Okay.
So we get the same report?
Right.
Yes. It's just some of them would already have been paid.
Oh, most of them would. And legally, you're still in the same legal.
I got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, thank you. All right, go ahead and call roll, please.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
You're voting.
Yes.
Karu?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Ustley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yeah. Okay. Joyce will.
I'll reword it.
She'll reword it. She'll reword it.
And you'd get us a copy. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that, we good? Alright, going to eleven A, unfinished business, eleven A high, A eleven A one, second reading of ordinance establishing a five-year non-exclusive franchise for cable services for the operation and maintenance of a cable communication system in the city of Morehead, Kentucky, and providing for the following regulations of said system, including grant, of non-exclusive authority rights, privileges of grantee for financial shareholder disclosure for new franchisees.
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright.
Joyce, you're comfortable with this?
Yes, they will get our bids at next council.
Alright, I even practiced last night. Question? Question's being called, please call roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Eleven A two, second meeting of ordinance amending the Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter seventy-three.
Some move, say it.
Any discussion?
I want to discuss this.
Where are we with the design? Go ahead.
Um, I would like to know before we actually take the light out, what the traffic is that's coming up and down the street, so that we have something to compare it to at a later date.
Okay, Joe?
We can do a, a traffic study, Transportation will provide us, uh, some equipment. We will have to have some monitors for that equipment, but they would be glad to provide it for us. I talked to one of the gentlemen at Transportation that deals with, uh, changing over the light to blinking. Uh, if you go that route, we'll have to leave it blinking for a minimum of two months, if not, all the time continually. Uh, they would be happy once we install the signs and cover them for stop signs. And they also recommended, there's no four-way stop or scenario anymore, it's an all-way stop. So, he said he would leave the turn lanes for a little while to ensure that traffic became accustomed to the way the pattern is, and that you all were satisfied before you start taking turn lanes out this time. But, uh, that can be done.
I'd just like to know, you know, so we've got something to compare it to down the road, whether it's been a success or a failure. Jim, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
At Hargis Avenue, did there not used to be a stoplight there years ago?
Yeah, I think so.
And that's worked okay, so.
No.
Was it always a stop?
No, it's never been a, when you said, what were you thinking exactly?
Hargis and Circus?
Hargis and Main.
Hargis and Main, done at, uh.
Was there not years ago a stoplight there?
Yeah, wait.
It was?
No. Well, I don't think there's one there when we wore telephone trucks at Jack Elwick Service Station, that's been a long time ago.
I thought there was too.
I thought there was one there.
Bruce, you're getting old enough now, you can't trust your own memory.
I guess, I got C O S.
Yeah.
Was there any?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I thought there was.
I thought there was too.
He's older than me.
Can you remember? Can you remember how, how long that, how long ago that was when it, when it was taken out, do you remember?
Just a few years ago, when we went to, I'm fifty-seven, I don't remember the right.
Fifty-seven, you keep using that number.
Jack Elwick had the gas station, I worked there in school, it was like that.
I, 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 go thinking about that, I thought there was.
When did they take it there?
Long, long.
Long time ago.
It's probably been nineteen seventy-seven.
It, it, it was never been since I moved here, I moved here in eighty.
I know when they put the stop sign up.
You wasn't even driving then.
I didn't know it was there.
Well.
When Bill Lane was mayor, Alpe Otchison invested.
There you go, question, question's been called. Call roll, please.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Item three, second reading of an ordinance amending Title III Administration, Chapter thirty-five Personnel, section thirty-five, oh six seven title grade salary scale by.
Some move, say it.
Any discussion? Hearing done, please call roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Item four, second reading of an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the Morehead Utility Plant Board, some move?
Say it.
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing done, please call roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Item five, second reading of an ordinance in the city of Morehead adopting annual budget for the Morehead Recreation Tourism Convention Commission and Morehead Conference Center for fiscal years fifteen sixteen.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, please call roll.
Who's the second one now?
Uh, Jan.
Jan.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Item six, second reading of an ordinance adopting the city of Morehead, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year seven one sixteen through six thirty sixteen, by estimating revenues and resources appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Some move. You have to, we have to have a second for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad.
Mayor, I'm gonna approve, uh, make a motion that we amend the budget, um.
You, you got the second.
You got the second.
You're second, I'm sorry, she interrupted, I didn't hear, I didn't know. No, I couldn't hear, I didn't know which one it was, honestly, I didn't. Okay.
I, I would like to amend the budget to lower the contribution the city contributes to the ambulance service by thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, that thirty-nine thousand dollars will help us cover, uh, the approximately twenty-nine thousand dollar shortfall, uh, that the county is deleted from our budget, um, and just gave us very short notice about that, so, that will help us cover that loss.
I'll second that.
I'll third it.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Alright, hearing done, please call roll.
This is a, you're taking role on the amendment.
On the amendment, on the, yes, your, your motion for amendment, but.
Atkins?
No.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
No.
Okay, any further discussion on the budget?
How about United?
What, I don't know.
United.
Yeah, we didn't have anything on United.
Does anyone make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, so we can have a discussion.
Okay.
I added five thousand dollars, so.
Second?
If you really have a second on that.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Can we give them less money? I mean, you know, I know we have some.
And I debated on saying twenty-five hundred dollars, and have the county match it.
Oh, well, has the county matched it perhaps?
And, and this is, I know it's not, but we can challenge them.
Well, and, and let me just say, in speaking bluntly about it, I can tell you from firsthand experience what that money goes for and how much it does. And I don't think five thousand dollars is too much in the number of people it can affect, and what a positive outcome it can be. And, no, do I think the county's gonna pitch in half of it? No, I don't.
And, and, and there's, and I agree with, when we get into that, but then again, some, some entity has to be the bigger entity and, and be a leader. And it's like we were the leader in the, uh, financial contribution partnership we had with the vocational school. You know, we're not talking about another entity here in our entity, we're talking about us, what we can do. And I agree, I agree, people get upset here and there and the other, for me, we have to be the leader, we have to stake it, we have to take the, the lead, and, and do what's right, regardless if anybody else joins on or not, that, we can't control that. All we can control is what we do and who we help, and that's, that's my point. Cause I, hey, we can sit here all day and go back and forth and challenge this matter, that's not gonna do any good. That's not, that's not getting it done, we have to get it done with the availability of what we have. Regardless of what somebody else, I don't care what anybody else does, we can do what we can do, and we need, we need to be in control of that.
And besides just being over here, I can tell you it works, and it helps, I've seen it first time.
I have to, it's not perfect, it's like nothing is, however, it, it does make an effect, positive effect. Any other discussion? Alright.
So, the motion is?
To add five thousand dollars to the budget.
Without the match? You didn't make the match part of your budget.
No, that was his comment on it. Alright, so the motion is, right, five thousand, alright, go ahead and please call roll.
Atkins?
No.
Uh, Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
As a discuss, we still have a budget to pull.
We do, we do, yeah, we're still.
So, we're still discussing.
Yeah.
You know, I don't have to be done, I'm as frustrated as you all are to vote no on this thing with the county, and I know not everything is done in our local agreement. But, to me, we need to start getting ahead of these things as best we can.
I agree.
Whether it can be talked about in March, you know, it's unfair after we've had our first reading, that they, they shoot us that blow, and then we could do it to them, anytime we want, you know, we're doing it tonight, and, and that's gonna mess them up. These things need to be hammered out ahead of time, even things like United, and these requests ideally should come early enough in, in the process that we could go to them and say, we're willing to do something in.
I agree.
Some kind of our local agreement. So, I, I don't know how we change it in the future, cause it's not all our local agreement, but I really think we need to understand, have a better understanding of where everybody's coming from before we get to our due meeting, and it's too late to know anything about it.
I propose that we, we reach across and set up and have, have quarterly, uh, joint meetings, or at least twice a year, so we can see these things. We had the one number first year, I thought it went really well, we got some good ideas out, but since then, it's kind of been on our own.
Since then, they voted to, you know, cut our budget by tw- almost twenty-nine thousand dollars. They voted not to participate in the recreation commission. So, you know, where are the signs, positive signs coming from them to work together?
I, I, I agree.
And, and the other thing, Mayor, is, and I mean, I understand your point about leadership and stepping up, but we also have to be concerned about the citizens of Morehead and the taxes they pay, and where they're used.
I agree.
I, as a citizen of Brown County, already pay taxes for the ambulance service. I'm paying double taxes as a citizen of Morehead for the contribution we make.
I agree with you.
I, I mean, somewhere along the line, we've got to hold folks accountable, and, uh, you know, we're, it's, it's just not fair to the citizens of Morehead to have to pay for any ambulance service twice.
And I, I don't disagree, and to be brutally honest, and quote me if you want, I don't care, but, it, it comes down to a point where they've not been willing to step up to even talk about any kind of tax raises, increases for many, many years, and they wear that on their shoulder, whether it's the Lexington thing, or whether they truly are trying to be fiscally responsible, but, not doing those things and then cutting our budget because we've been willing to do that, doesn't sit very well with me, but, I don't have to tell them that.
I think they're all good points, I agree.
What do you think their response would be if we suggested a joint meeting in, let's say, September?
Well, I think we ought to have a joint meeting in September, and we ought to have one at least a few months ahead of the budget process to get on the same page. Maybe a March meeting, maybe a, maybe a spring and fall meeting. I, honestly, I, I think they would, I think they would have it, I think they would do it.
Well, I went to the fiscal court meeting, my first one, when they were discussing the first round of budgets after it had just been given to them, and they're wholeheartedly against not raising taxes. Um, and I think, um, Grant Alden was there, and their main thing is their priority are their, you know, the nine-one-one, the ambulance, that, emergency services type deal, um, and they're not looking beyond that recreation, that type of stuff, and they just don't want to cut the taxes, or raise the taxes to provide for anything else.
Well, not only that, the jail just keeps costing more and more.
And, and something that we need to reflect is, this is not unanimous throughout, well, when you say that, when it, leadership, I think, I think the person in place now, in the judge, in the judge's position would, but I think, I know for a fact the fiscal court won't.
Right.
And, and, and I, and I had a discussion with the judge over the weekend at the Trail Fest, and we sat down and talked about alternatives to that. And one of the things had been proposed by this young lady way back when, and that was, uh, back on the insurance, looking at that, where that, where that would be countywide, vis a vis what Owensboro did, Owensboro did that, in order to do what they did, they got the county involved with, they didn't raise taxes necessarily, but they went and, and looked at the insurance rate, whereas, for example, Ashland's at ten percent, we're at four, Owensboro was at four, so they raised it up countywide to six after so many years, and then to eight, they're still below Ashland, for example, but it generated them a lot of income, and the reason why that was an issue that, I know you talked about, I think, back in the fall, why that's so quote-unquote a fair rate, is that not everybody pays occupational tax. People who are retired, other people, but most everybody has insurance, and it's countywide, so, we talked about the potential of possibly looking into that and doing maybe, so there are other avenues out there that the judge, I think, i- is willing to look at, but I think right now, there's some, you're right, when you saw that it was for nothing against any, so, there are options that we just have to be a little bit more creative, and if we can have, we can help them in that matter by maybe meeting in September.
It's not a challenge to make their budget, but, but, but when they're making decisions in the last minute that affect our, I have a problem.
I think, well, that, that should have been communicated a little bit earlier, and I, and if we didn't, maybe not us, but if we both had come together and maybe set up something from now on that says when we get into our budget, new budget cycle negotiations, that we need to talk, we need to meet, I think that would, that would have probably helped that. If they could have gave us a heads up, then maybe we could have done some shifting, trading, swapping, whatever, to make it, but you're right, it was kind of out of the blue, and I, that was, I, I understand, Tom, that's the way I felt when I got the email. It was kind of a, especially if we had ours, pretty good shape, I thought.
I mean, at one point, we had some statistics, I guess that was while I was on the tourism commission, of what percent, oh wait, no, it wasn't, I remember. What percent of, of youth participate in the city recreation program?
Oh, it was, it's like, the county, the county's like ninety percent.
It just seems like.
Probably, and it's, we did that several years ago, it's, 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 it's up there.
I mean, I mean, could we put together some information like that of, of who truly benefits from the city, the city recreation program, and then, with that kind of information, go into some of these recreation meetings, the board meetings, and, you know?
We could go through and put that data together, again, if you like.
Is, I don't think that's gonna matter.
Well, I, I agree.
Not with the jail, huh?
I come from around, I stay near, with the amendments that follow.
Okay.
Or pre, that preceded them.
Alright, go ahead and.
So, you're voting on the budget as amended?
As amended by the.
As amended.
But the two amendments.
Right. Yes.
One deleting thirty-nine thousand, one adding five thousand.
And we didn't have to. Okay, alright, I'll make sure I was right on that, alright, go ahead, and please call roll.
Okay, um, Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Oosley?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, move on down to item seven, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a franchise agreement with Fleming Mason.
Some move.
When they submitted the bid, and it was three percent.
I still move.
Okay, thank you.
Second, anyone?
Second.
They were the only ones to say.
Any discussion? Hearing done, please call roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Uslie?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Item eight, first reading of an ordinance confirming the sale and awarding an exclusive franchise to Fleming Mason for a term of twenty years for electric franchise.
So moved.
Save it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Uslie?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
All right. New business. Item, the first item is resolution authorizing condemnation for the C D B G project. So moved.
Second.
Now we can open it up for discussion?
On the information, Joyce, do I need to abstain from this?
Oh, I'm the... He's not controlling, he doesn't have any. Okay. All righty, discussion on this. Okay, all right. Then go ahead and call roll.
Atkins?
No.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Uslie?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
All right. Item two, first reading of an ordinance amending the city of Morehead, Kentucky Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? Hearing none, please call roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Carew?
Yes.
Franzini?
Yes.
Uslie?
Uslie?
Yes.
Teager?
Yes.
Item three, first reading of an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Morehead.
So moved.
Save it.
Second, Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, please call roll.